Board of Commissioners for October the 6th to order. And we'll have a roll call, please. I pray. All right, now we have invocation by Vice Chair Mary Perkins-Williams.
Please stand. Dear Lord, we thank you for your guidance. We thank you for your mercy and your grace. We thank you for all you did to us. Direct us as we make good citizen. Our suggestions help us to understand. Let us be kind and loving to each other. All these things I pray as I ask for your name. Amen.
Now we invite Michaela from Farmville Central. She'll lead us in the pledge.
Good evening. My name is Michaela Antwy. I am a 12th grader at Farmville Central High School, and I am currently in my school's SGA, Link Crew, and National Honor Society. I am also a student intern through our Pitt County's Technology Department. Thank you for having me this evening, and at this time, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you. Moving along to approval of the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to second that motion with a friendly amendment that we remove Item 11 for discussion and grant support for fire service. The reason being, at the Fireman's Association's request, we've undertaken study of fire service in the county and what to do about it. I just think that it'd be more prudent for this board to have further conversations on that after we have return of that study, which I believe will be this year. So I just ask that this be tabled until that time that study comes back.
Do you have a motion and a second? Please vote. So the motion passes with the removal. Now we have public addresses to the board.
Mr. Chairman, you have two signed up to speak. The first one is Jimmy Hodges.
Mr. Attorney will read our statement.
Thank you, Chairman. Pitt County welcomes all comments on matters of public concern. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak, a total of 30 minutes is set aside for public addresses to the board. Please state your name and address prior to speaking.
Yes, sir, I'm Jimmy Hodges. I live in Outland Village off of Black Jack Simpson Road. Chairman, Commissioners, Miss Manager, for those who don't know me, I'm your 911 Director down in the basement. I work for Emergency Management. The discussion that I was kind of talking about might just got tabled, so I feel kind of useless while I'm still saying my piece. I want to make it clear, I'm not here to speak in opposition of loaning fire departments money or giving grants to fire departments, but we've had a few events in the last several years that have made me feel passionate enough to come up here and talk to you. Miss Manager and her executive staff have done a phenomenal job over the last several years helping the county with recruitment and retention. We've done job fairs, we've done market campaigns, social media blasts, and most recently, we've done NeoGov. And I can tell a huge difference in the applications we're getting in. I'm starting to see pre-pandemic numbers as far as applications coming in. This is greatly appreciated, and it doesn't go unnoticed. We really do appreciate it. Like I said, we've had some events over the last several years in the 911 Center. We've had leaking sewer pipes that spewed black liquid into the communication center. We've had leaking cement tiles over our critical infrastructure. Two weeks ago, we had a telecommunicator while taking a phone call had water dripping on her head. And ironically, we were doing interviews. I found out later, after we got everything situated, that it was toilet water coming from our first-floor toilet. It makes it hard to recruit people and retain people to come have to work in this type of environment. Once again, I'm not speaking in opposition of giving money to any volunteer fire department, any EMS agency. I started my public safety career at Belleville Fire Department. I now volunteer at Simpson, so I do realize the struggle financially that some of these rural departments have. But if Pitt County has the funding to just give away money to departments and agencies and municipalities that already have a revenue source, can we not try to prioritize our Pitt County employees first? That's all I'm trying to bring to the attention of the board. Only bringing up to prioritize our Pitt County employees with our current situations. Thank you.
Nicky Bion A. Okay, was not intended to be signed up there, that's fine. Thank you. That's all that I have signed up for public addresses to the board.
All right, we will now move into presentations. If we have a motion to approve the two proclamations. Motion and a second. Please vote.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and those here present with us, we have two proclamations to share this evening. The first one recognizes National 4-H Week, and if those individuals associated with that proclamation would come forward. Thank you, and I know it'll only take a quick minute, but if you'll please introduce yourselves.
Matt Stevens. I'm the County Extension Director for Pitt County Cooperative Extension.
I'm Lauren Doe, and I am the Pitt County 4-H Agent.
Nicky Bion Atkinson, the County Council President and the President of the Pitt County 4-H All-Stars.
I'm Jaye Cresshild. I'm Vice President of Pitt County Council and President of my 4-H Shooting Club.
I'm Jamie Hall. I'm the Member Engagement Officer on the County Council.
My name is Madison Johnson. I'm a former Northeast District Secretary Treasurer and County Council Secretary Treasurer.
Excellent. Well, we are thrilled that you are here representing this incredible organization, and we present you with a proclamation this evening that reads "National 4-H Week Proclamation." And it says, "Whereas 4-H youth across the nation are leading efforts to solve problems in their communities and make a difference for their futures. And whereas 4-H is the largest youth development organization in North Carolina and the largest in the nation with over 6 million participants. And whereas 4-H in North Carolina claims 260,000 youth members and 13,000 volunteers, while Pitt County 4-H program numbers more than 6,000 participants and more than 50 volunteers. And whereas 4-H is part of the North Carolina Cooperative Extension System of North Carolina State University and NCANT State University, is a program where youth learn through opportunities that provide them hands-on experiences in 4-H's mission, mandates of science, engineering, and technology, healthy living, and citizenship. And whereas 4-H has connected youth and their communities with the innovative research and resources from our nation's 112 land-grant universities and colleges for more than 118 years. Now therefore, the Pitt County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim October 5th through the 11th, 2025, as National 4-H Week in Pitt County. We urge the people of this county to take advantage of the opportunity to become more aware of this special program that enhances our young people's interest in their futures as part of Pitt County 4-H Youth Development, and to join us in recognizing the unique partnership between our county and the State University system. Adopted this the 6th day of October, 2025, signed by Chairman Benji Holloman, Pitt County Board of Commissioners, and attested by Kimberly Hines, Clerk to the Board. If, Mr. Chairman, you'll present that to Mr. Stevens.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. You want to get a picture?
Yes, I will squeeze him for a picture. One line and a half, or do you need two? Two lines? All right, let's put the youth in front. Thank you so much. Next, we have a proclamation recognizing National Fire Prevention Week. If our Emergency Management Director and anyone else he has would like to come forward. Thank you for joining us, Randy Gentry. And this proclamation reads, "Proclamation Recognizing National Fire Prevention Week, October 5th to the 11th, 2025." And it reads, "Whereas the County of Pitt is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting our county. And whereas, fire remains a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and the presence of lithium-ion batteries in many household devices introduces unique fire risks. And whereas, most of the electronics used in homes daily, including smartphones, tablets, laptops, power tools, e-bikes, e-scooters, and toys, are powered by lithium-ion batteries, which if misused, damaged, or improperly charged, can overheat, start a fire, or explode. And whereas, the National Fire Protection Association, the NFPA, reports an increase in battery-related fires, underscoring the need for public education on the safe use of lithium-ion batteries. And whereas, residents should follow three key calls to action: buy only listed products, charge batteries safely, and recycle them responsibly to prevent battery-related fires. And whereas, lithium-ion batteries store a large amount of energy in a small space, and improper use such as overcharging, using off-brand chargers without safety certification, or exposing batteries to damage can result in fire or explosion. And whereas, the proper disposal and recycling of lithium-ion batteries help prevent environmental hazards and reduce fire risks in the home and community. And whereas, the County of Pitt's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of fires through prevention, safety education, and community outreach. And whereas, the 2025 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Charge Into Fire Safety: Lithium-Ion Batteries in Your Home," serves to remind us of the importance of using, charging, and recycling lithium-ion batteries safely to reduce the risk of fires in homes and communities. Now therefore, we, the Pitt County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim October 5th to the 11th, 2025, as Fire Prevention Week throughout Pitt County. Adopted this 6th day of October, signed by the Chair and attested by the Clerk. Thank you so much.
All right. Now we'll move on to our public hearings. Mr. Hill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, members of the board, County Manager. Tonight I have an item before you regarding amendments to our Pitt County Soil Erosion and Sedimentation Control Ordinance. For those who may be new, Pitt County is a locally delegated program by the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality for the administration of our Erosion Control Ordinance here in Pitt County. This delegation allows the Pitt County Planning Department to review, approve plans, issue permits, and enforce compliance locally versus at the state level. We recently had a monitoring visit by the state, and they recommended that we update our ordinance to align with some newly adopted state requirements. The new legislation that is mainly impacted is the NCGO-1 General Construction Permit, which requires lots within a common plan of development to have an approved erosion and sedimentation control plan, regardless of the size. In order for us to maintain our local delegation, we have to amend our ordinance to reflect this change at the state level. Section 5, we're recommending a change to, or in addition to, a definition that is not currently in our plan, and that is what a common plan of development is, in fact. It's defined as a contiguous area where multiple separate and distinct construction activities may take place during different times, on different schedules, under one common plan. So typically, it would be for a subdivision plan. Each individual lot would have to have an erosion control plan. Under Section 7, we're recommending, including language, that projects may be developed in phases with separate erosion control plans, and to remove the exemption for anything less than an acre. Our current ordinance says that anything less than an acre is exempt. We'll be taking that out. It also adds language to required erosion control plan for less than one acre if it's part of that common plan of development. And you'll see that throughout these amendments. Right here in Section 10 is another example of requiring that erosion control plan, if it's less than an acre and part of a common plan of development, as well as Section 20. And also, we are going to allow digital plan submittals as part of these amendments moving forward, and also adding requirements for the transfer of plans between the owners or successors of the plan. Section 20, the county may require revised plans if existing plan is deemed inadequate, and also adding language to clarify the requirements for the amendment of a plan, and including language that failure to file a plan is a violation of the ordinance. We're also, staff is also recommending a fee establishment for these individual lot plans. $50 fee is what we're recommending to be added to the Pitt County Manual of Fees. This will help with offset staff time required for review, monitoring, and compliance enforcement of those plans. The Technical Review Committee has reviewed these amendments and recommended the following motion to approve the amendments and to amend the manual of fees to include that $50 review fee. And, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have, but we do have to hold a public hearing.
All right, I will declare the public hearing open. Has anybody signed up to speak?
No one has signed up to speak.
I will declare the public hearing closed. What is the pleasure to vote?
Mr. Chair.
He has a question.
Oh, sir. Mr. Hill.
Yes.
If there is a farmer developing, like building a couple of buildings on his farm, does this apply to him if he's going to build like a 40 or 50 by 100, and then right below it, he's going to build another building?
Oh, agricultural is exempt.
That's what, that was my question. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Two motions, move that we approve the proposed amendments with effective date of October 6th, and also amend the Pitt County Manual of Fees to include the $50 fee for review of erosion control plans.
You got a motion and a second. Please vote. Thank you. Motion passed. All right, thank you. Moving on to Items 4, Report. Madam Manager.
Yes, I'll take your first item, which is your monthly financial report. It's been a pleasure to serve as your interim finance officer for this short period of time. I've worked very closely with the financial services staff, and I'm pleased to provide you the monthly financial report ending August 31st. At your second meeting in October, you'll see the report ending September 30th, at which we'll catch us up. So we'll do two this month. You don't typically receive it this month. You will see on page 12 of your package that revenues are tracking ahead of expenditures and are in line with revenues expenditures last year. And so I'm pleased with that report. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
You got a motion?
Second.
Second. Please vote. Thank you, ma'am. Now on to your regular job.
Yes, your manager's report. Starting with a reminder of your next meeting dates, October 20th and November 3rd, in this room at 6:00 PM. On October 7th, tomorrow morning at 8:30 in the morning, all Commissioners are welcome to join us if you are available as we recognize employees who have achieved service milestones in their employment with Pitt County Government. Those employees are listed in your agenda package on page 14. And if you'll allow, I'm sorry, on page 15, we have receiving a five-year service recognition, Marilyn Andrade with Social Services, Clinton Danner with the Sheriff's Office, Bobby Dildy with the Sheriff's Office, Pamela Johnson with Register of Deeds, Donata Moore with Social Services, Ethan Mull with the Sheriff's Office, and Terry Roloff with Social Services. We have 10-year employees, Nicole Barnes with Public Health, Pam Black with Register of Deeds, Tim Corley with Engineering, Beth Fitch with Register of Deeds, Alicia Gregory in Social Services, Antoine Holloway in the Sheriff's Office, Carol Sherman in Public Health, and Kealan Whitehurst in the Detention Center. Receiving recognition for 15 years of service will be James Conger, Jetson Gerkins, and David Leggett, all in the Detention Center. And then, having served 20 years, we'll recognize tomorrow morning Laureen Brown in detention, Jason Godley in the Sheriff's Office, Heidi Shelton with Public Health, Jimmy Sugg in Tax Administration, Milton Tugwell in Tax Administration, and Harvey White in Social Services. We'll have one 25-year service recipient, Doug Delenti in the Sheriff's Office, and one 30-year recipient in the Register of Deeds. We will celebrate Tracy Buck. So we will join them for breakfast tomorrow morning in this room. Your next reminder is the Employee Appreciation Luncheon is this week on Wednesday from 11:30 to 2:00 PM in the Pitt County Office Park Community Center. So that's the North Office Park Community Center from 11:30 to 2:00. All Commissioners should have signed up for a lunch that day. Please come and join our employees as we celebrate them on their employee appreciation luncheon. Item D is another reminder of our strategic planning community forums. This week is all about strategic planning, and we're so excited about it. We start tomorrow on the 7th at 6:00 PM. We'll have a community input session at Aiden Middle School on October 8th at 2:30 in the afternoon on that Wednesday. We'll be at Pitt Community College. Wednesday, we'll meet again at 6:00 PM at North Pitt High School. And then Thursday, the 9th, we'll meet at 10:30 in the morning at the Cultural Arts and Recreation Center at Large Meeting Room on County Home Road at the Alice Keane District Park Cultural Arts and Recreation Center. October 16th next week, we'll do a virtual event, and members of the public or staff can contact my office to receive a link for the virtual access for that session. In addition to those, we're holding three employee forums this week. We have our social pinpoint site up and running, and the surveys are coming in. I'd encourage all listening to go to Pitt County's website, click on Social Pinpoint, and take less than three minutes to fill out a survey to let us know how you think we ought to invest in the future of Pitt County. Item E is a reminder, on October 18th, from 3:00 to 5:00, our Cultural Arts and Recreation Department will be doing a Trails and Treats Event at the 4561 County Home Road location. We hope you'll be able to join us for that fun event. Item F is an update on Forerunner software. And this is in our continuing effort to leverage technology and innovation and increase transparency with the public. I am thrilled to say that our Forerunner software has gone live. It is a central online location accessible on the county website or through the Planning Department page for flood information. I've played around with it a little bit this last week, and it's pretty cool. You can enter into that site, type in any address you want. I started with my own, but you can type in any address, and it will pull up flood information about that parcel. And if there are warnings, or recommendations, or certifications related to that parcel, it is all available to the public in that one spot. So something I am very proud about, about how we've leveraged technology to increase transparency under the leadership of Jonas Hill in the Planning Department. Check it out if you have not. Item G, you may have a picture up on your screen. There it is, is just to acknowledge that on September 24th, last Wednesday, we attended the Best of 2025 Pitt County Event, hosted by the Daily Reflector sponsored by Pitt County Government, and our Farmers Market won the gold award as the best farmers market in our community. And so you have on your screen a picture of our attendees. That's a super fun event because we invite Commissioners who are able to attend and senior leadership team. And then we have enough tickets to raffle off to our employees who join us for a fancy evening of a nice dinner. And we enjoyed that event, and we were so thrilled. To see a picture to your right, our Farmers Market Manager accepting that gold award on behalf of Pitt County. Item H is an update on your mega-site. You may recall at the last meeting, you authorized us to apply for a grant for the Economic Development Mega-Site north of the river. We submitted that application timely, and we have received an informal notification that we have been awarded the maximum award of $2 million to be allocated towards due diligence for that site. Because it has been informally announced, I wanted to share it with the board as soon as we knew. This will come back to you as an item for decision at the meeting following my receipt of the grant agreement for you to then consider acceptance of the grant funds and the budget amendment that would go along with that. So this is just an announcement, but it will come back as a decision item if you choose to accept those funds. Item I is another exciting one, and that is to provide an update that I have filled the position for your Chief Financial Officer, and to share that with the board. Michael Hardy has been selected to serve as Chief Financial Officer. He will begin work with Pitt County Government the week of November 23rd. November 24th is the Monday will be his first day. And just by way of background, we are thrilled to receive his expertise. Michael is a pirate. He received his bachelor's degree from the ECU College of Business in 2013. He received his master's degree in accounting, also from East Carolina University, and he is a certified public accountant. He has a CPA. He has several years of private sector experience in both auditing and accounting, and he has even more years of public sector experience, having worked with Craving County Government from 2018 to 2022, where he handled for Craving County Government Finance Administration, Cash Management, Budget Management, Investment Management, Debt Management, and Disaster Management in his roles there. He is currently employed as the Chief Financial Officer for Pitt County Schools, just one floor above us, and he will join us on November 24th of this year to assume that role. So I wanted to share that with you. He will also be shared. I know we just had a joint meeting with the Board of Education, but it will be shared with the Board of Education this evening as well. And Dr. Lassiter and I will work closely together as we manage that transition from one floor to the other. So please welcome Michael when he joins us in November. And then lastly, I wanted to make the board aware, if you've not heard already, of the passing of our namesake for the Farmers Market, Leroy James, and to let the board know that the Chairman did sign a letter honoring his legacy that we provided to Mr. James's niece, which was shared at his service last Saturday. And so we honor his family this evening and did so in a letter signed by the Chairman. And so we honor his family this evening and did so in a letter signed by the chairman last week. And that is all that I have unless there are any questions.
Any questions? All right, moving on to items for consent.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion in a second, please vote. Now moving on to items for decision. Sheriff Dance, you are up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, what am I talking about first? I'm talking about two things.
Telecommunicator.
Telecommunicator, okay. So, yes, there was a request that I made of Winterville to assist in getting a telecommunicator. Our call volume, we did a pool from, forgot the years, but it was maybe a year or two where we had 133,000 calls. 10% of those calls we dispatched for Winterville. All of those calls has resulted in me needing another telecommunicator and, because of the workload. And so instead of initially coming to the board to request that position, I tried to find other ways to do so. And so that's how the conversation started with Winterville. And the need also for another telecommunicator comes from the fact that I have from '23 to '25 accumulated almost 4,000 hours in overtime with our telecommunicators in having to come in and to work due to not only a shortage, but with the way that the resources are dibbied out right now, it has necessitated that I, that I have that coverage at all times, more than one dispatcher at a time or telecommunicator at a time because of the workload. So I am here to talk about that and request that position. I didn't just come with a problem, I came with a solution in how that could be accomplished.
Any questions from the board? You have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
A second.
Motion in a second, please vote.
He's messing up.
There you go.
Thank you.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
We'll see you again on item number seven.
Yeah.
Don't get too comfortable. All right, now moving on to requests for four new FTE of Social Services.
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Rochelle was under the weather this evening, so we have Tanya Cannon here, who is their business officer and well-versed in this matter.
All right.
Good evening. My name is Tanya Cannon with Social Services. I'm the business officer and we are requesting the addition of four new FTEs in our Child Protective Services Assessments Division. They're going to be on-call workers, workers working after hours. They'll be doing child welfare as well as adult services. And with adding these four new positions, it should cut our on-call or our accumulation of comp time drastically. That is our hope for that. Let's see, we are asking to use our restricted DSS fund balance for this. So that's mainly what we need right now.
Any questions?
Do you have any questions?
I'm waiting. I also have a question. Second.
Got a motion in a second, please vote. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Mr. Corley, contract for design of a park within Pitt County Office Park.
Yes, good evening, members of the board, Madam Manager. This first item is for Cultural Arts and Recreation Department. We've, we did RFQ, Request for Qualifications for the Design of the Phase 2 of the Pitt County Office Park Facility. We chose Wooton and Company as our firm that will do that design for us. And this is going to be paid partly through the part-of-grant that has been brought to this board and approved. So tonight, we're asking for approval of the contract and authorize the county manager to sign that contract with Wooton Company for up to $150,000 maximum.
Any questions? You have a motion? Got a motion in a second, please vote. All right, now sticking with you, item number four, contract award for Detention Center.
Yes, this is a contract award with Curtis Construction. We've used them in the past. They were the low bidder in the informal bid process for replacement of the roof at the ID lab at the Detention Center. So tonight, I'm asking for approval for the manager to sign the contract with Curtis Construction in the amount of $88,100.
Got a motion?
Second.
Second, please vote.
And those funds were budgeted in the capital improvement plan budget.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Demery and Mr. Randall.
Good evening. Before we get started, I would like to say about the batteries and hopefully the public, if you're going to throw away something that has a battery, please take it out. We have had a fire in a trailer at the transfer station and they will, they will catch on fire. So I am going to speak to the media tomorrow about it, so let's get that word out. We need to recycle those batteries, those lithium batteries. So I'm here, have a proposed change to the contract with CND Landfill. CND Landfill is the landfill here in Pitt County that has been taking our construction and demolition debris since, for over 25 years. They have come before us asking for a price increase. We've met with them several times, staff, Tim and I, and negotiated, went back and forth negotiating a price, and we think we've come up with a fair price. We'd like to enter into a extension of the contract for three years, starting with $35.50 tipping fee that we will pay the first year, $37 for the second year, and then $38.50 the third year. That also includes a $2 fee that they charge us that goes to the state. And so what I would like is your authority to authorize the chairman to sign that change order for us, and I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions? You have a motion to approve? Oh, I think we have a question.
I have a, I have a question. Do you have a flyer with that on about the batteries?
No, ma'am, we're working, we're working on that with the state.
And we'll get it.
Yes, ma'am.
Get it out to the community. Thank you so much.
Motion to approve. Got a motion?
Second.
Got a second, please vote.
I would like to add one more thing. I will be coming to you in November. We, our franchise agreement is also up with CND Landfill. In order for them to operate that, they, the county has to give them a franchise agreement. And in that franchise agreement, it's proposed that they pay us a dollar for every ton of trash, even the trash that we send them. And I'll be, we had to advertise for it, it's being advertised now. I'll be back in November for a public hearing on that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, personnel ordinance updates. Ms. Florida Hardy.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. Good to see you.
I'm here requesting an update to the county's personnel ordinance to cover a mandate that came to us from the General Assembly, which is now going to require us to do background checks on all employees or applicants who will be working with children in any capacity. So not only does it require a background check through the State Bureau of Investigation, but it also requires fingerprinting. We were already doing background checks, they were just not running through SBI. We were doing them through a private company. So with the background checks with the SBI, this is going to be quite a number of our positions because we have lots of positions who do work with children. So it's going to affect our departments. The cost of it's going to go up just a little bit. I did put, they're charging us $38 for a background check. I had 14 in for fingerprinting, but I've been working with the sheriff office, Sheriff's Office, and it's going to cost us 10. That was part of a fee that they were charging online. So we will be purchasing the coupons for our applicants that they can then make their appointments online and they won't be charged $14, but the Sheriff's Office will bill us and we will pay them, actually, we'll buy the coupons, so they will be already paid for. And we will give the applicants the coupons so that they can go online and set up their appointments with the Sheriff's Office to get their fingerprints done, so we can get the background checks taken care of. It may slow down our hiring process just a little bit because they've warned us that it may be a two to three-week turnaround for us to get the results back from SBI because it's not just Pitt County. It's every county in this state and the municipalities, they're going to be following this role. So if you would, we'd like to update our personnel ordinance to cover this change. That's it.
Any questions? Mr. Nunle.
Thanks. Thank you, Ms. Hardy.
You're welcome.
The, you did say two to three weeks.
That's what they're telling us.
That is the optimistic expectation of delays.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. McGlaughlin.
Yes, Florida, is this a standard practice throughout the whole state of North Carolina?
It is now.
It is now?
It is now because this mandate is for government agencies across this state. So it came from the General Assembly.
Okay, thank you.
Any part of the questions? Yes, ma'am. Got a motion?
Second.
Second, please vote. Motion passes.
Mr. Chair, before Ms. Hardy steps down, I just did have a question. It is a mandate. I wonder if there was, and maybe no one has the answer for it here, but is there a contemporaneous expenditure being made at the state level to help bolster up and stand up this program or has funding remained flat?
They always mandate it and never help us.
Well, that, that's my question. I think that's an important question. Anytime, anytime that, that our process, especially when children are involved, and as we know, when we have people working with children, oftentimes we are, we are in a situation where we're understaffed and these children that are not getting touched and not getting, getting attention because we're understaffed, if we're pushing that back further. I just hope that the state is also funding to make sure that this does not create a massive backlog because I could see how that could cause major problems at rendering services at the county level across the state.
If it delays our hiring process.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
There is no state, there is no state funding and I'm very concerned about the delays because our process as it is requires a period of advertisement, a period of review and qualifications, interview period, and we have to make, select the person to make the offer.
Contingent offer, that's correct.
Contingent. So once you finally get to the point of offer, then you're delaying potentially up to a month for this process. And it is difficult to attract people to local government service as it is. So very concerning and no funds coming to assist us.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Sheriff, you're up again.
Hello again.
Welcome back.
So now, at this point, we're talking about body cameras. I believe in 2019, 2020, somewhere around that point, we did, you all gave us body cameras for our sworn officers. That has been a huge benefit because it has reduced 75% of complaints on officers because we now have something to back us up and show what we did and why we did what we did. I am, I then, at some point, wanted to also equip detention officers as well with body cameras. I believe we put it in the CIP, but we were always, we're always looking for ways to make sure that we try to not be such a strain on the county. And so we came across a DOJ grant for body worn cameras that requires a 50% match from the county. Again, a problem with the solution. We, since we have the body cameras already and there is a, a existing contract with Axon, we are able to use the existing contract as an in-kind match, which means the county would not have to come out of pocket for that match. So it was a little misleading in the way that it was written, that it appeared that we were asking for the 50% match, when in fact, we can use our existing contract to make, to satisfy that match. So we would not be asking for anything other than to be allowed to go forth and apply for this grant.
Any questions? Motion?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion? Second. Please vote. Thank you, ma'am. All right, number eight, reappointment to the Aiden Planning Board.
Yes, the town of Aiden is recommending Jerry Cox be appointed as the ETJ member on the Aiden Planning Board. If reappointed, his term will expire August 5th, 2028, and he meets the eligibility requirements having missed only one meeting since 2022.
Move to approve. Got a motion?
Second.
Second, please vote. All right, reappointment to the Pitt County Planning Board.
You have two reappointments being recommended for the Pitt County Planning Board. Thompson Forbes in District 6 and Steve Little in District 2. Both are eligible for reappointment and interested in serving another term.
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion in a second, please vote. All right, we will now go to Commissioner's comments, who will start to my right, Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Smith.
No comment, sir. I think the trash is better in my district, and I was complimenting my district how good it was. So I'd like you to continue because we want people to know that we love where we live. Thank you so very much to the public.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Manning?
No comment, sir.
Commissioner Nunle.
No comment.
Mr. Florida Hudson?
Yes, I just want to inform you that I will be attending the Association Board of Directors meeting this Friday and Saturday in Carterick County, both at North Carolina.
All right. Commissioner McGlaughlin?
No comment.
Commissioner Webb?
No comment, sir.
All right.
Is it time to go home?
If you made that motion.
I'd like to make a motion, we go home.
Got a motion?
Second.
Second, please vote.
And congratulations. I think we did excellent tonight.
I'm quite done.
Oh, you're on?
I'm just kidding. We're done. Good night.
Building families is the pursuit of places that promise stability, growth, and ample opportunity for the future.
One of the reasons that parents are leaving urban